Well, good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to today's special city council meeting. Today is Thursday, July 30th, and certainly pleased to have you all here today. We will start our special meeting with an introduction to your city council.
Council members Anderson.
Here.
Erickson.
Here.
Urbanback.
Here.
Jamison.
Here.
Karski.
Here.
Kylie.
Here.
Rolfing.
Here.
Staggers.
Present.
We are very, very pleased to have, for our invocation today is Abbott the Min Hoa of the Wonderful Garden Buddhist Meditation Center here in Sioux Falls. I want to let you know that this is a really, really special honor on all of our behalf. Mr. Min Hoa will give, he'll start out with the invocation in Vietnamese, and then he'll also do it in English as well. What we'd ask you to do is to stand and then remain standing for our pledge allegiance. Welcome.
Good evening. Good afternoon, everybody. Lady and gentlemen, thank you for inviting me. My name is the Min Hoa, the Abbott of Wonderful Garden Buddhist Meditation Center. I come here to offer prayer for blessing. Please keep silent and we try to practice. I will pray in Vietnamese language and then translate in English for you. Amen to the blessed one, the worthy one, the fully enlightened one. I go to the Buddha is my refuge. I go to the Dhamma is my refuge. I go to the Sangha is my refuge. May the Buddha bless you and your family be happy. Repeat after me. May all be happy. May all be happy. May all be happy. Buddha bless you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselors, thanks so much for this opportunity to present to you the budget address for the year 2016. I certainly appreciate this opportunity and your time. I do want to start very, very briefly by just touching on 2015. We're nearing August, and my goodness, we certainly have another great year upon us. Right now, infrastructure and these road improvements that we're doing all over our town, they really can't go much better. The weather has certainly been cooperative, and our team is just really doing great things. As you know, our event center is operating in the black, just like we had planned it to be. We have just announced an unprecedented indoor aquatic center title sponsorship, and yes, just like our roads are doing so well with construction, well, our new indoor aquatic center is certainly, that construction is on track as well. Just made an announcement, thanks to the good work of so many, the preliminary flood insurance rate maps are there. Counselor Staggers and I had the opportunity to celebrate that yesterday, and again, just a great day in our city's history. We have a new fire station, and it's doing well, supporting that northwest side of our town. And yes, as we've talked, we've got plenty of good jobs available in this town. One of the biggest things that's happening in Sioux Falls, and no one can doubt this, is that it is another record-breaking year when it comes to construction. Right now, council, I'll let you know, it looks like it's going to be a record-breaker. This is the strongest start that we've ever had in our city's history when it comes to construction through June. Leading the way is commercial construction, new commercial construction, as well as additions and remodeling to those commercial properties all across town. Just to kind of give you some perspective, through June, we're at about $376 million in construction. Back in 2014, which again was the largest that we've ever had, we were at $281 million in construction. So again, off to a really, really grand start. I meant this sincerely. I sincerely think this is one of the biggest wins probably in our city's history, and I thought we should just touch on it again. We have reached a major milestone when it comes to the redevelopment project of the downtown rail yard. The great news is that in 2018, we are projecting that we will certainly put that money to use that has been appropriated to us by the United States taxpayers. By 2018, we truly believe we can really begin to develop those 10 acres of land. Counselors and citizens of Sioux Falls, in no uncertain terms, your city is certainly on solid financial ground. Let's start with some of the basics, and that is that piggy bank that South Dakotans, that Sioux Falls people really, really care about. We have added $5 million to our city's piggy bank since 2010. Our reserve levels, as you can see, were at 33% of our operating budget for a year. That's right around $46 million. Just kind of give you a little perspective, not that this would ever happen, but let's just say that we wouldn't bring in another dollar into our city's treasury. Well, in Sioux Falls, South Dakota, we could actually operate this government for four months without even having another dollar come into our door. We do build these funds and we utilize these fund balances over time as we prepare to open things like new fire stations or to meet other operating needs and demands of our city. I wanted to just compare us just a little bit to other towns, other cities across our area, just kind of give you a flavor about, you know, how much debt do we do in current in this city when it comes to Sioux Falls? And I think that you'll see our debt burden is incredibly low. Our bond ratings are very, very high, and rest assured, Sioux Falls, rest assured, council, you can sleep well at night when it comes to our per capita debt. There are three ways really that we fund city government: sales taxes, property taxes, and user fees. Let's start off with how we're doing on our sales taxes. Really, really good. In 2015, we're projecting that our sales tax growth will be right around 7%. Year-to-date, we're at about 6.8%, so we're right on track. In the budget that we've planned for 2016, we still have it growing strong. We've got it projected to grow at about 6%. That construction that we've been talking about, again, record construction one, record construction two, record construction year three, and now record construction year four, that is making an impact when it comes to our property tax revenues that are coming in, and it's really starting to show. In 2015, we projected around a 3% growth. Well, we're going to increase that. In 2016, we're projecting a 4.5% growth when it comes to property tax revenues coming in to our town. Those are the revenues. Let's just talk a little bit about this budget, and get ready, because we are going to present to you the largest budget in our city's history, $471 million. One thing that I want to relay to the council, and it's just something that I just think is so important, you know, counselors, there are a number of things on our city's to-do list, and to me, it should be this team that tackles this to-do list, not future leaders, not future citizens. I think that the citizens want us to get things done, and ultimately, that's what I would like us to try to do. I don't want to leave things like the repair and the rebuilding and the replacement of this infrastructure to future generations. So because of that, we are increasing this budget, a $64 million increase over 2015, with the bulk of that going to things like utility operating and capital investments, as well as, yes, those streets and storm drainage capital investments as well. We are projecting, of course, that we're going to live within our means. Not only are we going to spend, you know, $471 million potentially, but we're going to live within our means. These revenues will cover the cost of doing those good things for our city. We're projecting around $472 million in revenue in 2016. Now, some of that is going to be, is going to come through things like water reclamation borrowing of about $32 million, as well as that public parking ramp that we've been talking about. We'll borrow around $9 million to construct that, the parking ramp. But we are projecting, again, growth in sales taxes and growth in our property taxes. And again, you can see by the graph up above that 43% of the revenues come from taxes, others come from charges and for goods and services. That's where the bulk of the money comes from. Kind of give you a little flavor, you know, where does this, where does this money go? You know, what makes up the spending pie? About 63% goes towards keeping this government moving, keeping it, keeping it operating. Again, about 28% towards capital, year-over-year improvements that we're making, and then, yes, about 9%, one out of every $10, goes towards debt. Now, that hard-earned money that the taxpayers, they care so much about and they work so hard for, where does that go when it comes to this budget? Well, about 28% goes towards things like utilities, another 15% towards highways and streets, and of course, we want to keep our people safe, so about 13% goes towards public safety. The general fund budget, let's talk just a little bit about that. Again, our priorities in this town, and I think they're pretty clear, and as city counselors, you know what these people in this town, they really care about. Well, bar none, they want this town to be safe, so public safety is really a big, big deal for our citizens. Well, 38% of the general fund dollars goes towards public safety. That's almost $60 million goes towards keeping our people safe. Streets, about 17% or $25 million, and then, yes, parks and recreation, around 11% or about $17 million. Now, this is a little different. Again, this is the general fund, so the difference is that in the capital budget, there you're going to see those investments in streets and in utility infrastructure, that's where the priority is. On the operating side, of course, you can see where the money is spent in things like public safety, streets, and parks. Again, we live within our means here in Sioux Falls. We're very, very responsible, we're very, very prudent when it comes to developing these plans. So I wanted to give you a little flavor in the 2015 original budget and then compare it to the 16 budget that we're recommending to you folks today. You can see the change in the revenue, the change in the expenditures, and they are in line with, they're in line together. Again, we do plan to utilize reserve funds in the 2016 budget, just like we've done in the 2015 budget. In the 15 budget, we plan to use reserves that we talked about earlier of about $5.3 million. We're also planning to do the same thing in 2016. Now, counselors, Counselor Erickson, Counselor Kylie, I should let you know that over the years, we've planned to utilize reserve funds, but in the five years that I've had the opportunity to serve, we've never had to utilize those reserve funds in the past. Don't know where that's going to go this year, but again, I wanted to make sure that you're aware, we are planning on utilizing some of those reserves in the 16 plan. Now, those priorities. If you want to serve the people of Sioux Falls as your mayor, as a counselor, you better understand something. You better be prudent, you better be responsible when it comes to building, building your plan or building your budget. Now, I think we all are aware, there's certainly our unlimited wants, there's unlimited needs that are out there, there are limited revenues, and this council, they insist that we live within our means, and let's, again, let's talk about that. At a minimum, this council, they want you to have at least 25% saved in your piggy bank for those operating, those operating projections that we have. So because of that, you do have to make tough choices. So, you know, what are we going to do in 16? What are we recommending to you, council? What are we recommending to you, citizens? Well, we're recommending that we are, that we stay boring. Here's what we want, just more of the same. We want to take care of what we've already have. We want to stay one step ahead of the growth that's happening in our city. We certainly want to tackle some tough issues like we've done over the years, as well as, whenever possible, you know, let's go out and grab or capture some of those long-awaited opportunities or needs that are within our town. So, priority one, let's take care of what we already have, Sioux Falls. I mean, what a novel concept. We've been doing it in just a grand way over the last five and a half years, and I'd recommend that we just keep doing it. Why? Well, we've got 3,000 lane miles of streets, and we have winter and we have summer, and our citizens want them in good shape, no matter what time of year that it is. Can you imagine this? 860 miles worth of sanitary sewer, another 1,000 miles of water mains, 419 miles of storm sewer, hundreds of city buildings and structures, and yes, remember, we want a park within a half mile of every home in our city. We've got 78 parks encompassing 3,161 acres. Now, you know, we think they're important, we do, counselors, we do. Mayor certainly thinks it's important. We're not alone. 98% of the citizens that we serve, they want us to invest in infrastructure. We hear you loud and clear, Sioux Falls, we do, and we're going to keep doing it. In this plan, we're going to invest about $54 million in utilities, another $42 million in roads, we're going to repair about 290 blocks of intercore roads that we have in our, in our city. You know that 12th Street Bridge project, we've been talking about it a lot as a team, and my goodness, it certainly is an expensive, but critical investment, and yes, we're going to try something new. We are going to use technology to evaluate the quality of our streets and then prioritize them accordingly. These hundreds of buildings and this equipment, we have to invest there too. Not only have to maintain the buildings that we have, but also, let's update what we have is ready as well. You know, just for example, Kaylee Library, in this, in this budget, counselors, we're encouraging us to spend about $1.1 million in Kaylee Library alone. I do want to just point out something, in our spirit to collaborate with the county, trying something a little unique. I have put together a recommendation with the help of the team that we help partner with the county to update the fairground restrooms as well. We'll talk about that more in the months to come. This is no surprise, but our citizens, they love our parks. 88% almost as much that care about the roads, they care about these parks, and so do we. You know, we have to maintain them, we've got this bike trail that we just, we just love, and we want to expand it as well as maintain it, and then, yes, that crown jewel of our city, Falls Park, we're recommending that we enhance that as well. Priority two, our town is booming. In fact, we've been called America's Next Boom Town by many. So, we want to stay ahead of that growth, at least one step ahead of that growth, whether it comes to, you know, keeping our citizens safe, whether it be supporting the 1,100, almost 1,200 city employees that we have, supporting them as a team, and then, yes, of course, keeping Sioux Falls moving. So let's talk about that just a little bit. 94% again, we're listening, Sioux Falls, we're listening to you loud and clear. You want this town to be a safe one. So do we. So do we. And so because of that, we're investing about $63 million of the general fund towards public safety. Just to kind of give you a little snippets here and there, we want to add more police officers, we want to add a forensic specialist, as well as an evidence technician within our, within our police team as well. Now again, 1,200 city employees, they are working their tails off for all of us. They're really, really doing a great job, and our citizens think that they should be taken care of as well. So, we do want, we are recommending that we add some new team members within the 2016 budget. I want to give you some perspective. In 2015, we did add 34 new folks to our team, 34. 15 within fire, five within police, and then again, 14 that were in, within city government as a whole. In our 2016 plan, we are recommending that we add more people to the team as well. 27 new employees to our front line. I do want to highlight just a couple of them for you, council. Five officers on our police team. We are building, we're right in the midst of building this new indoor aquatics facility, and so we are adding two FTE for that. In our Public Works team, we are trying a new strategy. We're getting ready to manage our fleet in a different way, so we're recommending hiring a manager for that. Our health team, and these health needs, they continue to grow in this ever-growing city, so we do want to add four new employees to our dental team. Web content specialist, we do need to find ways to keep up with this technology so that we communicate with all these people that we serve, and yes, I do believe we have the strongest legal team within our city's history. They're just doing great, great things, and I am recommending that at least we hire another employee for that team as well. Want to give you a flavor. These, these women and men that are going to serve, if you approve them, they do cost some taxpayer dollars, but we believe they're worth it. But I want to give you a flavor. It's about $2 million that will go in to these new employees. Now, counselors, people of Sioux Falls, please understand that we just don't hire people just to hire them. We don't. We scrutinize this just like you would in business. We look at other options, you know, can we hire someone on a part-time basis before they're hired full-time? Can we outsource these, these needs that we have in government? Can we leverage technology in order to meet the needs of our people? And please understand, during the five and a half years that I've been your mayor, we have had every single FTE before they are hired, they must be signed off and approved by this mayor. And it's been working. It's been working. You know, businesses have had to learn to do more with less. Families have had to learn to do more with less. Sioux Falls City Government is also doing more with less. The numbers prove it out. Back in 1990, we had 83 employees for every 10,000 population that we had in Sioux Falls, okay? Right now, in 2015, we're projected to have 71 employees per 10,000 population in the city of Sioux Falls. We have never been more efficient, more productive while serving the citizens of this town. Now, we also want to keep Sioux Falls moving. I certainly believe that we can get anywhere in this town within 15 to 20 minutes, and I know that Mark and Chad and Heath and the Public Works team, they want to make sure that that continues. So how do we do that? Well, we're going to utilize some signal technology, of course, and we're going to look at all these, these streets, whether they be intercore or arterial, in terms of how could we make them more efficient? And for those of you who want to keep, keep pace with the growth on the, on the outside of our town, so do we. When I was elected mayor back in 2010, we did put a heavy, heavy focus on the intercore roads of this city. So back in 2010, when it came to arterial spending, we spent about $4.6 million. Well, in this budget, council, we're recommending that we, that we double that and invest about $10 million into the arterial roads of our city. Priority three, you know, when we have that ability, when we work as a team, we get things done for the people of this town. We have tackled some tough, tough issues, and I mean, just talk about just a couple of them. You know, we talked about the rail yard redevelopment agreement, our new event center, rebuilding our city's infrastructure, pension reform, let's not ever forget about that. The Midco Aquatic Center, been talking about that since 1951. Technology enhancements. Counsel, we were using technology to manage this city from the 80s. No more. No more. We have given, an investment in our finance team, our department head, so that they can manage these dollars at the highest level. There's more work to do. There's more opportunities to capture. There's more issues that we have to tackle, and the challenge is that as leaders, as elected leaders, you know, this thing is, it's a really tough deal, but it's necessary. And the people want us to do it. They want us to tackle it. They want us to get things done. That's why we're here. So let's just talk about some of those things that we may want to tackle as a team. Let's start with those dreaded user fees. Let's talk about that just a little bit. Who should pay for government? Who should do it? Yeah, should it be the users? Or should it be just the general taxpayers? That's something that we talk about all the time as a team. We all know this, no one wants to increase fees or taxes. You don't want to do that. However, counselors, not a However, councilors, not addressing it to me and to the folks of this town, that's as irresponsible as anything, and it's not prudent for any of us. And then, you know, if we were to define free, you know, we all get it, but councilors, nothing is free. Nothing's free. Someone's got to pay for this stuff in government. So, councilors, I am proud of you. We've tackled some of these dreaded user fees over the years, we've gone up against the, those that were mad at us for doing it. We did it during our service, not during some other leader's service in generations to come. You know, we tackled building permit fees, we've tackled fire inspection fees, we've tackled sewer rates, landfill rates, water rates, electric rates, we tackled those as a team. And our utility funds, they are financially strong today, and we're able to keep up with this growth, we're able to maintain this infrastructure, only because this council made the tough decisions to continue to review rates and make the necessary adjustments. Other public services shouldn't be any different. In my mind, there's some others that are long, long overdue, long overdue. Transit fees, we've been talking about this as a team for almost two years. Been talking about it as a city since 1996. Can you imagine this? We've not increased transit fees since 1996. Park and recreation fees, not since 2005. Public parking fees since 2009, and yes, pool fees since 2011, and we've talked about this, council, there is nothing that is getting cheaper, nothing. It's so easy to allow someone else to do it. Let's not kick the can down the road any longer. Let me just give you a little perspective, talking about kicking the can, look at this, look at the transit rates. The last time they were adjusted was in 1996. Look at this, $25 for a monthly fixed route pass for our transit, okay, 1996. If we were to just keep pace with inflation on public transportation, okay, just inflation, nothing else, the fees right now should be about $39, just to keep up with inflation. I don't know, maybe this mayor is kind of getting soft, and I don't know, Tracy and the finance, maybe we're getting soft, but guess what? In this plan that we presented to you, we're recommending that we kind of get caught up to 2003 levels. I don't even know if that's responsible. It doesn't feel right to me. But councilors, I want to get something done. This $30 that we're recommending in this budget, it'll get us to 2003 rates. I mean, let's be clear, let's be clear, the transit riders, you know, as much as we value all of them, the transit riders have paid less over the years. The federal government has paid less over the years, and they're not clamoring at the bit to give us more money for public transportation, Sioux Falls, they're not. The general taxpayers of this town, they're the ones who've been picking up the slack. And we've been talking about this for two years. Let's give it another perspective, let's just look at the transit fares. The paratransit cost per ride, it costs $28 for a paratransit ride in Sioux Falls, and we charge $2. The ride's $28, the fare's $2, the taxpayers cover $26. The fixed routes, it costs $4 to ride a bus in this town, we charge a buck. The taxpayers of this town are covering 75% or $3. Pools and the fees, you know, a hot topic right now, and again, this is so hard, and people of Sioux Falls, you need to understand, these eight leaders, these eight people that you've elected, again, this is really, really a tough job. Because again, we want to be good to everybody, we want to be responsible, we want to be fair, we want to be prudent. That's why we're having these talks about pool fees, these talks about rates, these talks about free or not free. But let's be clear, we've got great pools in this town, but the user fees cover only one-fourth of the expense. The taxpayers are covering the rest, and we've got this new indoor aquatic facility that's coming. Council, I know it's something that you're considering, but with any new business, with anything new that you do, you want it to start off strong. That's why we are recommending that at least we start this new indoor pool with at least some skin in the game to get in it. You know, and I heard a comment the other day, and I wanted to address it, and it was this. Because we were considering to charge something to get into our indoor pool, it was being considered elitist. Really? Because you have to pay to get into something, now you're elite? You're an elitist? Tough discussions, but we'll get through them, we will. We'll get through them like we always do, just like we always have. Another tough one that we've got to deal with, and we just can't keep kicking this one down the road, and I'm so blessed by some of the councilors that are helping us on this journey, we need to tackle annexations. We've got 50 islands in the city of Sioux Falls, give me, oh, 50 islands, we've grown, we've done so well, but we're creating these islands every single year. Now, in the budget, I need to make you aware, we did put about $2.4 million in the budget towards these, towards this goal. Now, we're planning to recoup some of the money, yes, but possibly not all, and these infrastructure costs, they are expensive, but we deem that they're necessary. And be aware, on the journey, we are going to get some pushback, we are, we already are, but it's the right thing to do once again. Now, priority number four, again, let's go tackle some issues, let's capture some opportunities, but be aware, we know, we all have our own wish list, we certainly do. Some of the things that we think are important in this budget is, again, we are looking at about $12 million for our new downtown parking ramp. We want to invest about $10.5 million within this budget towards our new foundation park. We want to invest about $4.3 million in affordable housing, which certainly has been a challenge for this town and continues to be so today. Really, really thankful for your efforts, council, last year in terms of wanting to invest in workforce development, it was your idea, we think it's a good one, we do, and we're recommending that we continue it in 2016 by investing another half a million dollars towards that effort. We talked a little bit about this, but fleet centralization, today, we are kind of fragmented, we are kind of segmented when it comes to how we manage our fleet in this town. Our fleet study is completed, we're going to work on the software to make us more efficient, we want to implement that software in the year 2016, and yes, we want to hire a couple of good people to help us manage and facilitate that effort. In the news, police body cameras, we do think it's time to make an investment in that. We want to, we're recommending that we purchase 12 body cameras for our motorcycle and bike officers who currently, they don't have those video capabilities today. And maybe I'll just, maybe I'll end on this. Again, it is certainly a big budget, the grandest in our city's history. So much to do, so much to accomplish, so much to tackle, but no matter what we do, council, I want to make you aware, feel good about what you're doing, feel good, because the citizens, they're doing well, they're pleased with our progress. In fact, over 90%, they believe that Sioux Falls is a great place to call home. They love living here. This budget, with your approval, and certainly there will be some changes made along the way, I strongly feel that this budget will make it an even better place to call home. Councilors, the finance team, the department heads, the 1,200 city employees, and yes, this mayor, we look forward to working with you on the 2016 budget. I want to thank you for the time today, make it a great day, everybody, thank you.